Ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:00 PM. It's time for this study session of the Wayne Westland Board of Education to begin. We're going to begin with Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Just to let everybody know, I'm having a little bit of difficulty finding our agenda for this evening. But Mr. Neal, if you please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Hines. Mrs. Walker. Dr. Weaver. Myself also here, Mr. Buckaloo. Mrs. Mendel.
I'm here.
And President Cox.
And I'm also here.
All seven in attendance.
Mr. Secretary, because I can't find my agenda, will you please repeat the next item on the agenda for me?
I don't have that agenda in front of me either.
Next item is citizens' comments, agenda items only.
Mrs. Mendel, you are who I was going to next.
Okay, I printed it out.
Appreciate that. I tried to do that too, but at the last minute couldn't make it happen. This is a portion of our meeting for citizens' comments on items which appear on this evening's agenda. Is there anyone in participation that would like to address the board on the agenda this evening? Thank you, Shauna. Do we see any? Is the administrator pointing to any?
I have something to say.
I'm sorry, who is that?
This is Don Harris from the WWEA.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Please begin.
Thank you. Greetings, President Cox and Wayne Westland School Board members. We want to thank you for the opportunity to share data from the members of the Wayne Westland Education Association as you prepare to study and vote on a decision that will impact the student staff and community of Wayne Westland. As important decisions are being made regarding the start of the 2021 school year, the Wayne Westland Education Association is interested in the safety and well-being of all members of the Wayne Westland School family and therefore are requesting the board votes to support a virtual learning start this fall. While districts around us have begun to share their plans for the start of school, anxiety is a new level, is at a new level for the members of the WWEA as many concerns around the phase the district is in. And the required versus strongly recommended requirements for face-to-face instruction of the hybrid or full face-to-face model continue to be reviewed and questions around health and safety increase. This past weekend, we conducted a survey of members of the WWEA. In that short amount of time, we had almost 400 members respond. The survey was specific and included the following questions and responses. One, do you believe the hybrid model set forth by WW adequately ensures the safety of staff and students? Seventy percent said no, thirty percent yes. How safe do you feel returning to the proposed hybrid model this fall, the A-B days, on a scale of one to 10, with one being not safe at all to 10 feeling completely safe? Less than fifteen percent of the members responded with a score of seven or higher, while fifty-two percent responded with a four or lower of not feeling safe at all. The next question, do you feel that your health considerations have been adequately considered considered by those individuals making the decisions about schools reopening? Sixty-seven percent no, thirty-three percent yes. And the last question, do you believe it is a good choice for the district to begin the school year in the virtual plan model through a set period of time such as the end of the first trimester or until the governor declares WW at a phase five? Eighty percent of the members said yes on that survey. With almost forty, four hundred teachers responding in a very short period of time, the data is clear, eighty percent of the teachers feel we should return to school this fall on a virtual plan. We know these are difficult times of decisions that have to be made. Therefore, we believe in order to keep the priority of the safety of students, staff, and community as the number one priority, we need to move forward with a virtual plan. In order to move forward in the best manner possible, we all need to work together and focus on preparing the best plan for our students. We need to concentrate on safety while working on all the nuances for online instructions such as scheduling and curriculum, but also all the additional details that need to be planned out such as childcare, food distribution, technology dispersment, special ed, to name a few. Currently, the district as well as the staff have been working collaboratively to put together drafts of what the hybrid model, virtual learning models may look like. And we appreciate all the time and creativity that's gone into the planning for these options. We feel the time has come to narrow our focus to one model, the virtual model, so that the next five weeks can be utilized in the most productive manner possible to make the start of the 2021 school year, the best start possible for all students, families, and staff of Wayne Westland. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, you're Wayne Westland Education Association. Sorry, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board on issues on tonight's agenda? Do we see any? Can the administrator give me a message as to whether or not there's someone else? Okay, move on to the next item on the agenda, which I can see. Thanks to my colleague, Mrs. Walker. Appreciate that. Six three nine point two zero on our agenda. Mr. Dignan?
Good evening, Mr. Cox and board and community. Real quick, I put together a return to learn video. It's about twenty-two minutes long. It kind of captures kind of the whole plan and different aspects from the safety and operations standpoint. I do want to thank all of the educators that have jumped in the last couple of weeks to help with the planning and providing their voice. So we're very appreciative of that. After the video plays, what I'll do is I'll answer questions either from the video or the documents that I sent to you and try to get more specific in some of the questions and we can kind of proceed from there. So if Justin could, would you please play the video? Welcome to the Board of Education Study Session. My name is John Dignan and I'm the Superintendent of Wayne Westland Community Schools. This is a pre-recorded presentation and it has been voiced over to give you a solid overview of the possible scenarios of how we might return to school. We will play the presentation and field questions at the end of it. Please feel free to take notes. And then at the conclusion of the presentation, we will have an open discussion regarding some of the questions from the presentation or possible scenarios. Slide two is the return to school roadmap. On June 30th, Governor Gretchen Whitmer released the Michigan Safe School Return to School Roadmap, a sixty-three-page document with comprehensive guidance to help local school districts create plans for in-person learning this fall. Additionally, Governor Whitmer announced the signing of Executive Order 2020/142, which provides guidance on developing preparedness plans. Executive Order 2020-142 requires school districts to adopt a COVID-19 Preparedness and Response Plan, laying out how school districts will protect students and educators across the various phases of the Michigan Safe Start Plan. The Michigan Safe Schools Return to School Roadmap offers guidelines as the to the types of safety protocols that will be required or recommended at each phase. The safety protocols detailed in the Michigan Safe Schools Roadmap includes guidance on the use of PPE, good hygiene, cleaning, disinfecting, spacing in classrooms, screaming for symptoms, athletics, and more. The roadmap also recognizes the impact COVID-19 has had on students and educators' mental health and offers guidance on how schools can address these issues. We are working in conjunction with the guiding regulatory agencies, including the Wayne County Community Health Department, State of Michigan Executive Orders, and the Centers of Disease Control. Wayne has provided support as needed and serves as a facilitator between us and these agencies. Slide three deals with the reopening committees. Transportation, food service, technology, curriculum and instruction, special education, safety and operations, communications, and childcare. Our return to learn district committee has been meeting weekly since the pandemic began and continue to work through the release of the Michigan Return to School Roadmap on June 30th. Members of this return to learn committee have created the subcommittees that you see here on the screen. Each of these committees have been planning for a return to school scenarios. Please know that the safety of our students and staff is the number one priority for all these committees. Slide four is the return to learn plan. We have three scenarios for our staff and students to return to school in the fall. These scenarios are face-to-face instruction, which you can see in Plan One in the green, a hybrid model, which is Plan Two in kind of an orange-yellow color, which includes some face-to-face instruction and virtual learning, and then Plan Three, which is virtual instruction, which is red. Again, the idea behind this is it constitutes kind of a stoplight. Again, the only thing that is dictated we must do is if we're in phases one through three, we have to be remote or online learning. Slide five, Plan One, Face-to-Face Instruction. Just to give a little background, this could be used in phases four, five, or six, determined by a local school district. Buildings are allowed to reopen at full capacity, students attending school on campus, preventive hygiene policies and physical distancing guidelines, enhanced daily cleaning measures and protocols, remote learning options available to students who need it, social, emotional support available, transportation available, breakfast and lunch available, K through 12, IEP and 504 programs and services provided as outlined in the student's plan. Face-to-face instruction includes students coming to school five days a week while implementing the required safety protocols listed in the Michigan's 2020-21 Return to School Roadmap. This includes face coverings, social distancing when able, specific hygiene requirements and recommendations, and I will speak more to these items throughout the presentation. Slide six, Plan Two, Hybrid Instruction. This model has students both in school and out of school during a school week. Buildings are allowed to reopen at partial capacity, combination of face-to-face as well as remote learning. Optimizes limited in-person instruction with remote learning. Access to remote instruction and resources is ensured for all. Staggered schedules limits student exposure. Social-emotional support available. Enhanced cleaning measures with deep cleaning once a week. Transportation available, food service, K-12. IEP goals are addressed in person as well as remotely. This model gives staff and students time to build up to full face-to-face instruction. Students would attend schools two days a week and all our teachers would provide instruction based on priority standards and share different remote learning expectations and opportunities. This could mean homework that is given to students during that week that they would finish when they were not in school. Slide seven gives a sample of elementary hybrid schedule. For instance, Cohort A could include students with the last names A through K and Cohort B would include students with the last names L through Z. Cohort A would come to school on Monday and Tuesday, again with last names A through K. Wednesday would result teachers being only onsite possibly or remotely with student interventions, student independent studies, and teacher office hours. Cohort B would report to school on Thursday and Friday with the last names L through Z. Again, this is just a sample example of a possible hybrid schedule. As you can see, it lists the start times, thirty-minute lunch, and the end times of school. The lunch schedule, the recess schedule and special schedule to be determined by building. The Monday, Tuesday Cohort B would be completing assignments and remote learning. Thursday and Friday Cohort A is completing assignments, remote learning. I'm going to go through the schedule one more time. So Cohort A would attend school in person, Monday and Tuesday. Wednesday, everybody's off for a deep cleaning. Thursday, Cohort A would be accessing their education remotely at home. The same thing for Friday, Cohort A would be accessing their education at home. This is a sample of elementary hybrid schedule. Again, all students would be divided based on their last name. One group would be made up of alphabet A through K will attend schools on Monday and Tuesday, and L and Z would attend on Thursday and Friday. For example, if your child attends school Monday and Tuesday, his or her teacher will give them the rest of the work for the week and also be available on Wednesday for independent studies, intervention, and office hours. All of our teachers will provide instruction based on the priority standards. Ensure remote learning when students are at home. This is our expectation. If students in one household have a different last name, all students will attend the school based on the last name of the oldest child. Again, if a student in one household has a different last name, all students will attend school based on the schedule of the last name of the oldest child. Slide eight gives an example of a middle school hybrid schedule. Again, we would break students in two cohorts. One cohort would be Cohort A, which would include students with the last names alphabet A through K, and a Cohort B, which would include students with the last names L through Z. Just to give you a quick synopsis of how this works, again, this is just a sample schedule. All students would be divided based on their last name. Alphabet A through K will attend school on Monday and Tuesday, and then L through Z would attend Thursday and Friday. If students in one household have a different last name, all students will attend the school based on the last name of the oldest child. With this being said, as we start to finalize details and stuff, there will be other information added to these schedules like times that students would hand wash and things of that nature. Slide nine is an example of a high school hybrid schedule. Again, Cohort A would include students with last name A through K. Cohort B would include students with the last name L through Z. We would try to balance the percentage the best we could to balance the schedule. Monday and Tuesday Cohort A would attend school. We would have a block schedule format. So on Monday, again Cohort A, last names starting with A through K would have first, second, and third hour. Tuesday Cohort A would have hours four, five, and six. As you can see, they're in a block schedule format. The reason being for this is to cut down on possible transitions throughout the high school. Wednesday would be a deep cleaning. We would not have students attend that day. Thursday Cohort B would come to school, last name L through Z, again. On Thursday, they would be in a block schedule, first, second, and third hour. Then on Friday Cohort B again would attend fourth, fifth, and sixth hour. The reason for this scheduling is to cut down on transition times. Again, this is a sample high school hybrid schedules. So all students would be divided based on their last name. A through K will attend school on Monday and Tuesday, and L through Z would attend school on Thursday and Friday with Wednesday being off for everybody for a deep clean. If students in one household have a different last name, all students will attend schools based on the last name of the oldest child. Virtual instruction. This is full five-days-per-week virtual learning. This model would be taught by Wayne Westland Community School teachers utilizing Wayne Westland Community School curriculum. We will have a plan in place to distribute student materials and technologies if we began the year with virtual learning. We would also set up hotspots on our buses and have them go out to the same areas as our literacy buses did this summer to ensure connectivity during school hours. Slide 11 gives a visual of elementary virtual schedule. Again, this is just a sample schedule and to give people a visual depiction of what it might look like. Again, for instance, on looking at Monday, from 8:30 to 9:00, there would be a morning meeting or sunshine call for a check-in for our students. From 9:00 to 10:30 could be some kind of activity through English Language Arts. 10:30 to 11:30 would be math. 11:30 to 12:20 would be lunch and recess. And then 12:20 to 1 o'clock would be science or social studies. 1:00 to 3:20 would be our specials, student independent work, time, and interventions. Again, this is a sample of elementary virtual schedule. Core academic blocks of time may include live lessons, live small groups, independent work time for students. Length of the live lessons will be determined by grade level based on recommended lengths of lessons. Again, we might cut down the instructional times in these frames according to best practice. The middle school and high school teaching staff is meeting prior to this video. And again, they're working on virtual schedules and we will provide those as soon as they complete them. And we will hope to have those out very soon. The next slide is the Wayne Westland Online Learning K-12. As you've previously seen, we are looking at three different return to school models taught by Wayne Westland Community Teachers. This includes face-to-face, hybrid, and virtual learning. This program is an additional option for our families. Wayne Westland Online Learning K-12, you see often as formerly known as the Great Futures Online Program. We've offered this program for several years. We've added this year K-8 to the program. Before we were 912, we've added K-8 for this coming school year. We are accepting applications which are due August 17th, and the program is run through Ingenuity facilitated by a Wayne Westland mentor teacher. Those who have applied will receive a phone call the week of August 10th after the board meeting to see if they're still interested in the program. We recognize that some families may change their mind once they know what the school will look like in the fall. Those that are still interested in the program will be notified the week of August 17th if they've been accepted to the program. Safety and operations. Face coverings will be required for all staff and students in elementary, middle, high school, and post-secondary school programs unless the individual has a medical-based exception with a doctor's note. We will provide PPE, personal protective equipment, for all district employees. Only essential visitors will be allowed into the school. The district has developed draft plans for all other required areas in the roadmap, including extracurricular activities, communication, transportation, and for any time we are in an in-person learning environment. All district facilities have been inspected to determine the readiness for reopening by performing a risk assessment. District custodians have been trained to clean and sanitize all frequently high-touch and hard-surface areas.
We obviously have an audio issue.
I'm not getting any video at all, Superintendent Cox. I haven't for the whole presentation. It's okay. I mean, I'm following along.
Those people that are listening, obviously our technical people are backing up and trying to find our audio. Now, in the meantime, we'll just sit tight, give them a moment.
Include students with last name A through K. Cohort B would include students with the last name L through Z. We would try to balance the percentage the best we could to balance the schedule. Monday and Tuesday Cohort A. This is our literacy buses did this summer to ensure for a check-in for our students. From 9:00 to 10:30 could be some operations. Face coverings will be required for all staff and students in elementary, middle, high school, and post-secondary school programs unless the individual has a medical-based exception with a doctor's note. We will provide PPE, personal protective equipment, for all district employees. Only essential visitors will be allowed into the school. The district has developed draft plans for all other required areas in the roadmap, including extracurricular activities, communication, transportation, and for any time we are in an in-person learning environment. All district facilities have been inspected to determine the readiness for reopening by performing a risk assessment. District custodians have been trained to clean and sanitize all frequently high-touch and hard-surface areas. The district will comply with all state, county health, safety requirements. As required by the roadmap, the district return to learn committee has been engaged in detailed planning for the health and hygiene measures that will be required if or when our students return to face-to-face instruction. Planning for building and program cleanliness has been a key part of the work of the return to learn committee. We want to make sure that there is no compromise in the effort put forth for the daily cleanliness of our schools and to best protect the health of our students and our staff. Some of the health and safety protocols in FABS 4 include required face coverings, provide soap, sanitizer, paper towels, hand washing science, sanitizing stations. Strongly recommended, spaced desks six feet apart when possible, arranged desks all facing in the same direction, post-signage indicating proper social distancing, floor tape used at six-feet intervals where the line formation is anticipated, provide social distancing, seating markings and waiting and reception areas. Recommended, specials should be brought to classrooms instead of moving students to different locations. Entrances and exits should be kept separate. Families' responsibilities, strongly recommend. Parents or guardians should check their child's temperature at home each morning. Students with temperatures above 100.4 will be required to stay home until the child is fever-free for 24 hours, and the parent may consider COVID-19 testing if symptoms are present. If a child has symptoms of COVID-19, cough, shortness of breath, but no fever, the child should be kept home from school and follow up with their primary care provider. All parents or guardians entering a building should wash or sanitize his or her hands immediately upon arrival. Parents of guardians are responsible for providing facial coverings for their children. Designated entry and exit areas will be established in each building to keep traffic moving in a single direction. We need our families to support us with our return to school plan. If or when we return to face-to-face instruction, this includes checking your child's temperature, being aware of any symptoms of COVID-19, and providing facial coverings for your child. We recently had a PPE donation. Part of the reason that we pushed that out was to get more PPE for our family resource centers throughout our district. That way, we can help our community with hand sanitizer as well as masks and things of that nature. So far, we've had a great response. We have had $24,000 donated through our efforts so far, and we greatly appreciate our community for jumping aboard and helping us. So thank you. We've captured our timeline for right now from our August 3rd Board Study Session all the way through August 10th, where our Board of Education will take a recommendation from the superintendent of a final plan for discussion and approval. August 11th, we will have district meetings. August 12th, a community meeting. And then August 17th, our return to learn plans due to the Wayne RISA, which will in turn send it to the Michigan Department of Education. We're under a pretty aggressive timeline. We know how important it is for our community to plan for what the fall will look like, both for our staff, families, and students. So again, we want to get this out as soon as we can. Tonight's session is basically Tonight's session is basically framed to talk about the three models and answer questions that the board may have. Again, on August tenth, we will submit the superintendent's recommendation for what school looks like in the fall. The board will vote and then we will move from there. Again, we hope to have this final decision next week, August tenth, at the board meeting. And then we will proceed with the schedule as you can see on the slide. Again, I highly suggest people within the school community look at our recently constructive return to learn webpage. On there, all questions that are submitted and included will be part of our FAQ document, again, found on our return to learn webpage. And it will be shared on the website and emailed to staff and families. We plan to continue our surveys each week. Again, our surveys will take two to three minutes and only have four to six questions so we can get a quick response and perception data. Again, this is a community effort as we make this huge decision on what direction that Wayne Westland Community Schools will be heading in. Again, if you didn't get a chance to submit your question, please feel free to email it to info@wwcSD.net. We thank you again for everybody's commitment to our kids, to our community and to our school district.
Does that conclude the video presentation?
Yes, it does.
I'd like to say before we move to the next item on the agenda, I appreciate the creation of this. I think it was very detailed. I think it was very good frankly. And I want to also express my thanks to the technical school district to help you put this together. The next item on the agenda is the citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Notify me if there are any citizens, participants that wish to address the board on issues that do not appear on tonight's study session agenda. Is there anyone? Okay, saying that, I'm going to move to the next item on the agenda, which is six four one point two zero, review and recommendations of the members of the Board of Education. Mr. Buckaloo.
Well, I want to thank Mr. Dignan for the for the presentation. There's a lot to think about here. We certainly have in front of us number one concern, which is the welfare, not only of our students, but of our staff as well. And I think that that's enough at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Mrs. Walker, thank you for directing me to the agenda again, Shauna. Thank you.
No problem. Actually, I thought this meeting actually went quicker than what I was expecting. I thought there was going to be something else, but I just want to, excuse me. Hold on, y'all. I'm gonna close my window so I can hear that. What I was gonna say is that I definitely appreciate all the work that was put in by Mr. Dignan, the committees that came together. But I would be remiss if I didn't say how I actually felt about schools starting in the fall. I personally feel that we're not prepared to go back into the building. If you just look at the things that are going on in the news, people who have tried to go back to school or tried to go into things, it's we're just not, we're just not ready. I'm in a class right now and they were hoping to go back into the classroom, but they definitely won't be thinking about going back into stage five. And at this point, it doesn't even look like we're going to get there anytime soon. I don't feel that we can give a quality education in the building because everybody is scared that they might catch something or take something home to their family. You can't, you can't work in fear. And right now with this pandemic, we are living in fear. It's not fair to our teachers. It's not fair to our students. So I feel that whatever we need to do to be able to provide a quality education on a virtual basis would be the best moving forward. And then maybe we can rethink it come the beginning of the next, of the following, you know, of the new year after the holidays. But right now, it's just too many, I don't knows and too many uncertainties coming from not just the local, but from the federal. And I just think that we owe it to our families, our families, which is a part of all of our families, to make sure that when we do return to the buildings, that is a safe place and that you can think about learning and not fearing about whether you're going to be sick or you're going to lose your life or you're going to take something home to a grandparent. Because even though they want to say that maybe the kids aren't as susceptible as adults, kids don't teach themselves. The staff are the ones who teach them. And we still have to worry about our custodians, our bus drivers. Everyone contributes to this. They have to clean. They have to be a part of this. And it's just, we have too many students in our district to, even if we were to do a hybrid, I just can't see it. It's too much. And who's going to babysit kids watching each other? Kids like to touch. Kids like to, you know, embrace. They don't really think how we're thinking, you know? They're fine. They don't feel sick. My friend doesn't look sick. I can go hug them. And nobody's going to be patrolling them all through the bathrooms. It's just a lot to it. And I'm sorry for running on and on and on, but I've thought about this for a long time. And I just, I just wouldn't feel comfortable myself. Honestly, I don't even feel comfortable coming back into the boardroom anytime soon. So I really definitely wouldn't send anyone into a classroom. And once again, I apologize to my, to everyone for running on and on. But I, this is something that's really, I've been thinking about it and pondering on it. And I, this is just how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Shauna. Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. You guys have done a wonderful job, Mr. Dignan. I definitely liked the time and effort that you guys took there, planned everything out because I was concerned, as Shauna said, we have seen on the news about certain camps, you know, overnight camps where hundreds of kids have been exposed. I know in Georgia, they were showing how they were trying to get the kids to go back and more teachers were exposed, even with the Detroit Public Schools with the summer school coming up. I've gotten a lot of emails from teachers that's concerned, a lot of parents. I've been talking a lot in the community, asking, hey, how do you feel? I'm a parent myself and I'm really concerned about sending my son back to high school during this fall. Definitely would do a virtual just to test it out to see until, you know, like January or like at least a semester to try it out. But it is very concerning. And me myself, I'm an essential worker. I work at the bank. So I know what the teachers feel like to go back to work in the unknowns, you know, and putting their lives in jeopardy for our children. And as a parent and as a board member, as Shauna said, I would feel terrible, terrible if something were to happen to our staff or students. So right now, I just don't think we're ready to send them face-to-face. But another point, I do worry about the high poverty that we do have in the district and trying to see how the kids can come up with the PPE. I know we talked earlier about seeing if we can talk to Ford and see if they can donate us some PPE to like the staff, at least face shields to help us out. Maybe we can do some fundraisers and like you said, have the community join because your resource center is amazing. Another concern that I did have when the schools did shut down in March is with making sure that, you know, every child was able to get a lunch, you know, making sure they were able to get packets. Because some parents, especially a lot of lower-income parents, they have to go to work. So, you know, that's a concern as well. And what to do with the before and after school, trying to make it fit. So I know this is a very, very, you know, difficult situation. You guys put a lot of time and effort into it. And then I also have a concern too, a lot of our children in the district have asthma. So even if they were to return to school the spring, you know, we don't know what kind of chemicals, you know, we're exposing our children to as well. And that's mentioned in the union contracts when it comes to, okay, who's going to wipe down the desk? Who's, you know, so that could be an issue as well. So, but you guys did an awesome job and I'm definitely going to really look over this. But yeah, personally, my soul, this is right now, I think we should really just stick with the virtual learning until this virus, we can get some type of like a cure or I'm just so, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. To all the board members, I apologize if you hear an alarm. Apparently, my wife is burning my dinner. So just wanted to let you know that. I would be remiss if I did not say that I have great concern about returning. I like the plan that that you folks have come up with, the return to learn committees, Superintendent Dignan, you know, the two days a week. I think you've done a lot of great work on that. It will allow us to distance students. And, and that's a good thing. I also have heard from Mr. Harris tonight concerning the concerning the people, our employees. You know, the sample size was not as large as it could have been. But it definitely is something that we need to handle, you know, through HR, whatever. We need to look at that and make sure those numbers are, are right. And so anyway, I'm not going to drone on, but I have great concern about coming back. I really do. It's not, it's not my final answer. I'll wait until next week for that. But I just wanted to share those things with you. Also, one other thing is I would like an answer to a question because we see constantly people in the Wayne Westland area that refuse to wear a mask. What happens when our students come in with that same attitude? So that's where I'm coming from tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Vindell?
I'm going to be honest, this isn't about pondering. I've done a lot of praying on this and I'm glad to hear from Mr. Harris. I have also heard from a lot of people. A lot of thought has gone into what I see so far. And as of four o'clock today, I'm provided with a whole bunch more homework. I hope there's not a quiz later on. But my colleagues have expressed a lot of issues that I also, I submitted a list of like eighteen questions. And since the time I submitted that last week to the superintendent, I probably come up with twenty more. Some of the issues that I have were addressed by teleconference that I was part of, put on by the MEA and the AFT with specific professionals in the state of Michigan to address how the executive orders were written and the plan going forward. But the problem is, is that we just don't have a crystal ball. We do not have an oracle or anything that will tell us what the future is going to look like. We can only go with what we have right now. And what we have right now isn't the best that could be out there. But that's because we have too many variables, too many things are changing on a daily basis. And because of those changes, we cannot accurately say this Monday or next Monday that, yeah, this is the plan we're going to go with and it's going to work and we're going to be successful. We just don't know. And I know that Mrs. Walker and Mrs. Hines alluded to a couple of different things that I was also considering that maybe we need to look at virtual going into this until we get a better hand on how our state totals are going. Are we flattening out and going down? Will they come up with immunization for this so that we don't have to worry as much? We can always go back into the building. But once we go into the building, we've exposed our kids and our staff and our parents and bus drivers and every custodians to a lot of different variables that we don't really have that much control over. And it's going to be difficult at that point because plans have been made to roll back. I would, I would like to see us start virtually and then we can always take a look two months, three months down the road and see where we are. And possibly with the idea that we are going to get back into the classroom. It's just when? And I, I don't, I really don't like going to kids' funerals. I don't like to go to staff funerals. Funerals are not my thing and I've done too many and been to too many lately. I just want to protect what we have. I want to make sure our kids are safe. I want to make sure our staff is safe to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Neal? Mr. Neal, your mic is muted right now. Mr. Neal, you're going to have to unmute your mic.
I got it. I'm hitting the wrong button. Well, you're going to hear from me something quite different as compared to the other board members so far. I am as concerned as everyone about what is ahead for all of us, either exposure to COVID nineteen or getting our children back to school. But there's one reality that I recognize, and that is that COVID nineteen is here to stay. All the comments I hear from everyone are somehow predicated on this stuff is going to go away or we're going to come up with a magic vaccine that's going to make it perfectly safe for everyone to go back to school. And that's just not going to happen. Every other virus that we face today has not gone away. Every flu virus, even with vaccines, do not guarantee that you won't get it. The amount of antibodies that you develop in your body is different in all of us. Some of us will be protected more than others. Some will fade away and have to get another vaccine. My point here is that all about risk and reward. And in this particular situation, one of the great wonders of this particular virus are that the children are least affected. In Michigan, we have about two and a half million children aged zero to nineteen. Five of them have died. Now, that's not a good thing. But five out of the six thousand some deaths we've had here in Michigan, the children are the least affected. But I know that that's not the only population we're looking at. We have three basic groups that we need to look at as a board. We have the children themselves that attend our school. We then have the staff and faculty that work together to provide all that we need to have the kids go to school. And then we have the families at home. Because the staff and the families at home are various ages, usually greater than nineteen, they're more affected. But nevertheless, it's still a relatively small number. Parents are sitting out there right now saying to themselves, you know, in a few weeks, my children have to go back to some kind of school. Either they're going to be at home or they're going to be attending school at Wayne Westland. And they're wondering what's going to happen. They can't even plan at this moment. And when we finally do come up with a plan, they're going to be pressed very hard to try and get things together. I'm concerned about that. If I were to pick and choose, I would return to five days of school now because it's the schedule that is most familiar for both the children and the families. And I should add to that the staff. You don't have to invent a new way to teach. You don't have to try and make sure that all of our students are getting an equitable and even education because they're being provided the same training, the same education that they otherwise would have had. I think that a return to school five days a week is the proper way to go. I personally think the hybrid program is probably the most hazardous if you're trying to look at a hazard because you're inviting the kids to come to school for two days and then sending them back home. And now the parents are faced with trying to figure out who's going to take care of the kids while they're trying to work. Sometimes they're going to enlist the grandparents more than they otherwise would have if we were back at five days of school. And we all know that they're somewhat threatened. I'm not trying to throw them in as the reason why the hybrid program is not as good. But I think the blend really doesn't serve us as well as either come on back to school five days a week or stay home. But I have questions about the staying home. I quite honestly, and I'll talk to Mr. Dignan in more detail, but I quite honestly, and I'll talk to Mr. Dignan in more detail, but I'm having a difficult time trying to discern virtual training from our already standing program with the online K-12 program that we had on the books before. Does the virtual training now require the use of the same teachers that otherwise would be in the classroom? It sort of sounds like it in a way. And then I wonder to myself, then, how many teachers do we actually need? Do we need all the teachers still to teach if it's virtual? Or can we use the online K-12 program and just have whoever would normally monitor that, and no teachers have to be involved in any way? I know that leaves a lot of open questions still, but my point here is that it's all about risk and reward. I think an education is a great reward, and I think the risk is minimal. And I judge it to be minimal from my perspective and my life, having done what I've done. I judge it to be minimal for everyone. The children, the least affected. The staff also not as affected as we would be led to believe if we listen to TV all the time where they make us sound like everyone's on their deathbed. I could go on, but you can probably see that my opinion is very different. And just before I close, I'd like to add that I believe that our meetings should be in person and not virtual, and this would be especially true if we're going to send anybody back to the school building, anybody. There's no way this board could say that they can go work together, see each other, and we can't sit in the same room and have a board meeting. So that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. For my comments, I'd just like to say that every member of the Board of Education, including Mr. Buckaloo, who decided to say nothing at this stage, I totally appreciate your comment and how everybody feels, and I know that we probably are representative of the public at large that at this point, everyone has an idea as to which direction we should go in, and I think everything that I've heard tonight is very, very valid. But as Mr. Buckaloo said, the vote's next Monday, and we have to decide next Monday what we think is best, and one thing this Board of Education can't do is change public opinion about this issue. However, we may personally feel about the the actual threat represented by this virus. I keep thinking about the movie Jurassic Park where it was said, "Nature will find a way." Well, the virus is a living organism, and it's going to find a way, it's not going away, and there's going to be COVID-20 and COVID-21 and COVID-22, and at what point does our entire life stop out of fear? And if you look at the actual risk, I just don't, I just don't think the numbers support the reaction. However, this is one of those times, I'm glad that there's seven members of the Board of Education, and this decision is not all mine. It's going to be the majority of this board, and I know that we have a lot of work to do between now and next week, and I look forward to it. I, I hope I can get some more clarity in my own mind because I'm not fearful, frankly. I know that there are risks in life, and, but that's, that's for me. I don't know if that translates to the kids. Mr. Dignan, I think that you and staff of the school district have done a remarkable job under the circumstances, and I'm very grateful. I can't think of anyone who had to, I'm thinking about the 82nd Airborne, they got to jump and go right to work, and that's kind of what you had to do, too. So thank you for, for that, and thank you, members of the board, for your comments. And with that, I will invite a motion adjourned the study session.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Vindell. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Dr. Weaver, Mr. Neal, roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Myself also, yes. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Vindell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And President Cox?
Yes, thank you. We are adjourned.